Good evening and welcome to the September 9th study section, session. Please note that all council members are present and if you'd like to stand, Councilman, or I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Burton will lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on the agenda is public comments. This is the time and the place for the general public to address the council on subjects that are not elsewhere on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item not listed? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our discussion items. Item number one is future housing programs. This is to review and discuss our future housing programs and it's going to be led this evening by Chris Corbin, our Deputy Director of Development Services and Warren Morellian, Director of Development Services. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your time tonight to chat with you about this important subject. So what I'm going to be doing tonight is presenting a little bit of history on our housing programs in the past, where we stand now in terms of our existing housing programs, as well as goals and objectives that we have in our housing element, and then of course, mandates that the state is expecting us to comply with. I'm also going to be sharing with you our recommendations, staff's recommendations for proceeding with which programs and projects to proceed with in the future, and then I'm going to be looking to have you discuss and share your directions and your ideas with us so that we can move forward from this point. So I'm going to start out with, like I said, we'll review state housing mandates, we'll take a look at both previous and current housing programs. We're going to look at opportunities, programmatic opportunities, policy-based opportunities, as well as opportunities to raise funding to support our housing program efforts. We're going to discuss what resources we have available to us and what constraints those exist on those resources, and then, as I mentioned, we'll go through staff's recommendations for future programming, and then finally, we'll open it up to have an open discussion and receive your input and direction on future housing programs. So I'll start out with state housing mandates. I know it wasn't too long ago that you had to consider and adopt the housing element for us, and this is just a quick reminder of what the state has quantified for us in terms of our responsibilities. The state wants to see us allow for the development of, through our land use control, almost 7,000 units at different affordability levels. The largest group is above moderate income households, but you can, there's still significant number of homes that we are expected to support the development of in the very low, low income and moderate income categories. So past and present, there's five programs here that we've kind of historically, at different times, run here in the city. The home improvement program is the only one that's currently going today. In the past, we've successfully implemented an infill affordable housing development program, a home buyer assistance program. We've purchased affordability covenants on existing properties and towns to create affordable opportunities, and we've also partnered with developers to develop new affordable housing in the city. And I'm going to be going through each of these, just to kind of give you some historical reference and the strengths and drawbacks to each of these programs. The home improvement program, simply, we provide low-income homeowners in the city with financial assistance and technical assistance in dealing with the contractors to make needed repairs to their home. Common repairs would be things like new roofs, because your roof is leaking. They tend to be things that are, if not taken care of, are going to cause the home to fall into a state of disrepair that creates a dangerous situation for the owners and tenants. We've rehabilitated 276 homes since 2000. The majority of our clients have been senior citizens on fixed incomes. We do about 15 homes a year right now with an annual budget of about $35,000. And then, we fund these primarily with our city affordable housing funds, and then also Cal Home Program funds that we have been successful in getting from the state. Since 2001, we have gotten six grant awards from the state, each, I believe, at $600,000. So we've turned those around and put that money out there to help homeowners. This is just a quick before and after view of the type of work. We're not fixing up the homes to necessarily win the Mayor's Home Beautification Award, although certainly if they maintain the property well, they would qualify for it, but like I said, new roofs, paint, just maintenance of the property, so that it's a safe place for the resident and homeowner to occupy. Infill Housing Development Programs, this was one of our largest programs back in the early 2000s, and through this, we sought to work with existing landowners and developers, nonprofit developers, primarily like Habitat for Humanity, Neighborhood Partnership Housing Services, and we were looking to develop vacant lots in the downtown area, or lots that were severely underdeveloped or dilapidated. We did 23 projects between 2001 and 2017. There were additional six properties that were rehabilitated back in 1994, or on Ninth Street through an agreement with Habitat for Humanity. We currently own six parcels of land from that era that were purchased back in that era. Some were purchased for the purpose of doing infill housing projects, others were purchased for street widening purposes, but we do have six properties, and I'm going to discuss later how we propose to put those properties to use in our housing programs. This is a map, or a series of maps, that shows you where we've done development projects. Like I said, there were 23 in all that were done in the 2000s, and six more that were done over on Tenth Street. Sorry, I misspoke and said Ninth Street earlier, but this kind of lays out for you. Everything was really in the downtown area, with the exception of three homes that were done on Anderson Street. These are some before and after pictures. This home actually had a family living in it, and we approached them and, you know, spoke with them about their situation and the fact that they were living in an unsafe condition, and we were able to negotiate a loan with them where we lent them money to pay for rent, to move out, move into apartment, while we helped them hire an architect, a contractor, design a new home, get it built, and then move in. So, very successful projects. That was kind of the core. Same thing here, a lady, this is over on Second Street, Third Street, sorry, and same thing, living in conditions that somebody should not be living in, and we were able to work with them to help them finance the construction of a loan. And then, this is one of the homes that was on Anderson Street. Again, a home that just had reached its livable life, I think, useful life, and needed to be replaced. Home Buyer Assistance Program, this was kind of a one-off for us. We, back in the day when we negotiated a development agreement with Lewis Operating Companies for the Preserve, and then also several other developers like D.R. Horton, when they built their Artisan Collection, we required those developers to pay an affordable housing fee. At the time, most of our efforts were focused on rental housing or home improvement programs. This was a chance to help moderate income families acquire a home and create an affordable homeownership situation. So we entered into a development agreement with D.R. Horton, when they built the Artisan Collection, and they set aside 37 of their units for sale to moderate income families. And I think today, we still have about 28 of those people in their homes. The others have sold and moved on, and our loans have been repaid. So that was, it was kind of a one-off, you know, one-time deal, but it's been a, it was a successful program for us. Purchase of affordability covenants, so Villadell Sol, formerly the, ooh, I say Park West, but Mayor, what was the name of 13171 Yorba back in the day?
Kings Court.
Kings Court, yeah. So this one, we were in dealing with the property management and owners on code enforcement issues, and we were trying to help encourage them to fix their properties up so that they were safe and livable. And through those conversations, we actually found ourselves in a position where there was a common interest in us basically buying the right to buy down the rents. So we paid them a lump sum to buy down the rents for 55 years on 10 units in the property. And we audit that every year, it's going well, and so it's just another arrow that we can put in our quiver, another tool that we have available to us when it comes to future housing programs. New development, both in College Park and in the Preserve, we negotiated with SunCal at the time, Standard Pacific and Lennar later, and then Lewis Operating Companies in the Preserve, to have, to have them actually develop affordable housing within their projects. So as a result of that, Madison Square Apartments was built in the Preserve, was built by a company called Western National that Lewis had partnered with, and there are 250 affordable units in there. And then Bridge Housing built two different phases of their project, Ivy at College Park, that's another 335 units. So going forward, I'm going to review what are, now, some of what are our existing resources, both in terms of financial assets, but also in terms of staff, and then what opportunities do we have in front of us? Not just programmatic, but policy-based opportunities, as well as funding. So, available resources. Our Affordable Housing Fund is our primary and most significant financial resource. This fund has, came to be through a combination of leftover redevelopment housing monies that we were able to retain when redevelopment was eliminated, and it's also funded through in-loo fees that are paid by developers. Those in-loo fees have largely dried up. We don't have too many more properties that are subject to those in-loo fees, so that they don't represent a significant income source for us anymore. The 9.6 million in receivables is loans that are out there. They might be homebuyer loans, they may be the homeownership loans that we issued at D.R. Horton, they may be loans on the infill properties. Those properties don't turn over very often, because once people find themselves in that affordable situation, it's kind of a little bit like having golden handcuffs on, I think. It's not something you want to walk away from, it's going to be hard to match. So, and then, the average income of $500,000 a year, that is money that we do get through loan repayments, when a home is sold, or a homeownership loan is, when a loan, somebody elects to maybe refinance and take cash out, and in that case, they've got to pay us off. That's a requirement of our loan, so we get program income. So we get about a half million a year on that. The primary use, I put all programs because it's our, because it's our money, it's the most flexible funding source that we have. It does not have a great deal of restrictions on it. It's largely city money and therefore can be used as we see fit for affordable housing. Home Program, this is a, we received a state home grant back in the 90s to build the Seasons Senior Villas, and we have $1.2 million that has now accumulated over the years, because there's about a $30,000 payment a year that's made to the city. There's additional monies, payments made to the city, to the general fund for a land lease, but as part of the loan that we helped, that we gave to the developer to build the Seasons, their payments to us are about $30,000 a year. So we're up to roughly $1.2 million, and that can be used generally for new development of affordable housing, can also be used for rehabilitation and homeownership. The PLHA Program Fund, that's the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Fund, it's a relatively new state program that is funded through the bond measures that were passed a few years back. Our annual allocation's about 275,000. We're waiting on the contract right now from the state, and we expect to get that hopefully this month, and we'll start receiving those monies. Those monies are primarily for homeless programs and homeownership programs as well. Cal Home Program, this is the one that I mentioned that we predominantly use for home improvement, but we have in the past used it for homeownership loans on our infill projects as well, and this is competitive. We tend to successfully get money about every three years in a lump sum of about $600,000. We have $1.8 million in receivables out there, and we have roughly $500,000 on hand right now, and our average annual income for that through loan payoffs is $40,000. So, in total, we have about 12.3 million in cash assets. We have receivables of 11.6 million, which, not terribly liquid. Our average income is under $1 million being paid off through those things, and really, it's just over half a million dollars when you take out the PLHA funding. I just will mention that there's another $10 million in receivables I didn't put on here that's tied to the Ivy at College Park, because those loans aren't due till 2065 and 2070, so I don't think they really, those receivables really aren't a benefit to us at this point for the purposes of this discussion. In addition to those funding sources, we have six real properties that we own. The first two, the one on Third and on Ninth Street, those were purchased by the Redevelopment Agency back in the 90s for the purposes of widening Chino Avenue. The Ninth Street property was carved up a little bit and used proportionate, was deeded over to the city to put into, to create a turn lane, so turn lane to go northbound Ninth Street from westbound Chino. And the one on Third Street is a house that for many years we rented as an affordable home, and it's currently vacant. We also have additional properties that the city purchased through the years, northwest corner of Chino Avenue and Fourth Street, northeast corner of Chino Avenue and Second Street, both of which are undeveloped parcels. And then finally, there's two parcels on the corner, the southeast corner of Chino and Montevista, and one of those parcels was purchased by the city with the Affordable Housing Fund back in 2012, and another was purchased, we purchased that through a tax default sale using redevelopment money back in 2008. All of those properties are available to us to develop. There was a question asked by a resident at our housing committee meeting several weeks ago. We've checked with the Department of Finance, with the Oversight Board, with the county, and I've had some kind of preliminary discussions with Fred, and his concerns were about the Third and Ninth Street property. Department of Finance and the Oversight Board said, no, you can absolutely do affordable housing on those properties. The Oversight Board did though, say that, it appeared that in some of our documentation that we submitted to them regarding the dissolution of redevelopment back in 2014, 15, I think the paperwork was done, there was a, there's an error basically on one of these parcels on Chino Avenue, the 4917 Chino Avenue, that we can simply submit a request to them, for them to adopt a resolution allowing us to use it for affordable housing. So there'll be a little bit of administrative work to clear up one of those two parcels, but at the end of the day, all six of these properties should be available to us as a resource for future housing programs. So this is our, this kind of gives you an idea of where we've come from recently, at least with our housing fund balance. As I mentioned, it is our most significant resource. And then, where we're projecting it to go through the years, the drop is tied to the fact that our, now that we are starting back up some housing programs, we are starting to see our revenues fall short of our expenses each year, so they're falling back. Our primary expenses are on programs such as temporary rental assistance. We also pay salaries for caseworkers that are assisting our homeless clients in the city, and through their partnership, community services partnership with the quality of life team from the police department. So those, the rental assistance, the staff salaries involved with assisting those families or those individuals with getting the resources that they need, the services they need to try and get themselves out of the situation that they're in. So those programs continue to expand. It also takes into account additional monies, as if the county, if we continue to move forward as in a regional effort to develop the Navigation Center in Fontana, that will, there will be an expense, and we expect to pay it out of this fund, and it's, those payments that will reduce, will lead to this falling off over time. So now I'd like to move on to opportunities. So we have different program opportunities. We've gone through kind of how those work, but I'm going to go in a little bit more detail about their strengths and weaknesses of each program, and then also some policy-based and funding opportunities that we can decide whether or not we'd like to take advantage of them. So, the Home Improvement Program, as I mentioned, that we were assisting existing property owners with maintaining their home, getting the basic repairs needed to keep their home livable. It's an important program, in my opinion, for us. It invests in our aging housing stock. Almost 20% of our housing stock is 55 years or older, and almost one-half of our housing stock, which is 10,000 units, is 45 years or older. So it's something that I think is important. It supports property values, because we're helping to ensure that some of our housing stock doesn't fall into a state of disrepair. The disadvantages of the program is we don't get RENA credit for it. We do get credit in the sense that the state recognizes that we're preserving affordable housing opportunities. They view it as you have somebody that's living in that home and is able to live in that home, and they're low-income, and therefore it's affordable to them in some way, shape, or form, and you're helping them to continue to do so, continue to live in on that property, and to do so in a safe environment. The other disadvantage is that it's a pretty staff-intensive program. There's a lot of hand-holding that goes on, but it is, in my opinion, a very successful program, and one that any city of our age, with a housing stock of its age, is important. So the little chart on the bottom just kind of is intended to give you a quick kind of just overview of the, you know, which boxes it checks for us and what it doesn't check for us. And I've created those four categories. Do we get RENA credit, which we know is important from a housing element perspective? Does it help us revitalize and keep a high quality of life in our neighborhoods? Is, what's the cost? And you'll see there are one, two, or three dollar signs here, depending on the cost. And then also, is there mash and leverage available for us to take advantage of, either through federal or state funding? So in most cases, this checks the box. Infill Housing Development Programs, so we did, as I mentioned, a lot of this, you know, back in the 2000s. The market has changed, and this has become extremely expensive now because of the affordability gap that exists for somebody buying a home. It's not, when I came to Chino in 2001, our average, our median home price was $150,000. It's now five times that. So it is expensive to create affordable homeownership opportunities, but it has a lot of advantages. You saw through the earlier pictures that it's great at removing blight and getting rid of structures that frankly aren't safe, and they aren't desirable. We don't want our city to be represented by that type of product. That supports surrounding property values, and we do get RENA credit for that. So you'll see that it checks both the RENA credit and neighborhood revitalization boxes, but it's very expensive, and there's limited state funding or federal funding that we can use to match. There is some, we're not out there on our own, but it is limited. These are the six parcels that I talked about earlier. The map on the right, you'll see the five parcels on the west side of the downtown area along Chino Avenue, the two right there at the southeast corner of Chino and Montevista, and then three on the north side. And what is making those available is that our previous general plans, including the one that just sunset, was call for Chino Avenue to be widened to four lanes. The general plan no longer calls for that, so these properties are now surplus and can be used for development, and they're zoned for residential, so they present an opportunity, I think, for us to, and they're very, all of these happen to be very visible as well, because they're along the roadway, so it gives us a chance to make some, you know, significant, I think, improvements along that stretch of road. And then there's the one property that is left on Ninth and Chino. You can see where the turn lane was carved out. It does leave a very, it shows a structure there, there is no structure there, but it does leave a very interesting sight. We can probably, I think our planning department would be able to get creative and find a way to put a small home on that property, and we'd be able to get some value for it, and create an affordable opportunity. ADU Development Program, so this is not something that we've done, but I believe just holds a great deal of potential for us. We have a city with a large number of parcels that are, that would support the development of ADUs, especially in our older areas, we have a lot of parcels that are, that are over 7, 8,000 square feet, and just would easily support the development of an ADU. We could get RENA credit, and the idea here is that we would provide some sort of loan to the property owner to help them build. It wouldn't be a full loan, it wouldn't be for the full amount of construction, we're going to want them to have a stake in this, but it would maybe put a lot of people over the top in the ability to do it. In exchange for that loan, we would get a covenant on the property, and if the covenant is, if they're going to rent the property, the covenant's got to be for 55 years, and they've got to rent that property at a, an affordable amount to an eligible family. It would increase property values, which would create additional property taxes for us, it would certainly bring in some development revenues through building permits, and it would support multi-generational and growing families in our city, and it would provide additional income opportunities for those homeowners, which then, in terms, I think, would also support the local economy. The only disadvantage I can think of is that I think it would be a minor, there's going to be, you can argue that there'll be an increased scale of development in the neighborhoods, you know, where you once had a three-bedroom home, now you might have a three-bedroom home and a one- or two-bedroom ADU. So that'll be, that'll be the issue, and we'll have to, if, you know, the state largely regulates how, what we can and cannot do with ADUs, so that'll be, but that'll be something that we have to consider, but I think by and large, if we're trying to get some affordable housing created in the city, and we're trying to keep Chino families that have kids that grow up here and are looking to try and stay in our community, I think this really could be a really successful program for us. So it checks the RENA credit box, I didn't put it down as checking the neighborhood revitalization box, because it's really just a little bit of new development in somebody's backyard. It, I don't know that that really is going to change a neighborhood one way or another. The cost, I put $2 on it, but again, it's going to depend on what we ultimately decide. If this is something that you want us to explore, we'll come back with a more specific idea as to how much we'd be looking to land on a per ADU basis. And then, match and leverage, there is some money out there, it's limited, but we will be able to leverage our funds, our local funds, with funds from either state or federal sources. Home Buyer Assistance Program, this is, I mentioned, we had done this in the past, and we simply provide what's called a silent second mortgage. It's silent because it doesn't require payments. We require the owner to get a first mortgage from a bank to the maximum extent that they can, and end up with an affordable payment, and then we carry the rest. They, we take an equity share, meaning that when they do sell, we get our loan back, but we also get a portion, a percentage of the equity growth that's grown in the home. We built one of the infill projects that we built on Second Street. We, at the time that it was finished, the property was valued at 345, and I think we lent, I couldn't remember the exact amount, I want to say we lent around $200,000 to get that built, and then when they sold it, they sold it at like 720 a few months ago, and we got back a good chunk of change in addition to the loan balance, because we had a share in the equity and the value of that property. So, the disadvantages of this program, well, the advantages are it turns renters into homeowners, I think that's a good thing, and then owners in affordable situations tend to have discretionary income, and that benefits our local economy. The disadvantages in today's market is that to pull this off is a great deal of money, and it takes a great deal, and when you look at the amount of money that it takes on a per-unit basis, and then you look at your other options, like what it might be to create an ADU, it's much, much more expensive. So I think that's something that we need to, just, that needs to be considered as we make decisions going forward. We only receive credit if it is a newly constructed unit, so if we were to set up a program where we help people buy an existing home, we don't get RENA credit for that, so that really removes the incentive for us. And then, you're also, through this program, you're, just from a practical matter, you're not going to support very low and low-income households, because now the affordability gap is really out of control, you're almost having to buy the home for them. And then, we obviously have a risk as a homeowner, which tends to be a, it depends. When we did the D.R. Horton loans back in the day, we thought that we had fairly low risk, and then the Great Recession hit, and thankfully, most of those homeowners were able to hang on and work through it to back now where they're no longer underwater, and we have not only our loan principles secure, but we also have equity share that we'll receive as they pay off. So, a Home Buyer Assistance Program would check the RENA credit box if it's new construction, really doesn't do anything for neighborhood revitalization, extremely expensive, and there's limited funding from outside sources. New construction, so this would be similar to what we, the deals that we worked with Lewis and with Lennar, Standard Pacific in College Park for the development of new units. I know some of the council have toured projects by national core, so that's one developer, there are a number of developers out there that build new affordable housing. I think the positives are it develops vacant land resources in the city, would generate significant development fees. Anytime we enter into a deal like this, we do gain quite a bit of control over management practices, which is nice to have. We do get RENA credit. There's no relocation issues, because you're building from scratch, so you don't have families that you're displacing. Relocation can be extremely expensive. There's significant leverage and matching available on a, on a deal like, these types of deals usually have of deals usually have six or seven layers of funding, with the city being the very last layer. And there's federal tax credits. There's the home program, there's the multifamily housing program from the state. There's, the developers that work in this area, they're exceptional at piecing together all these different layers of funding to make these projects happen. So it, is it cheap? No, it's not cheap. We still have to step in, but the amount of resources that are brought from outside to leverage our investment are significant. And these tend to be your larger projects, like your Ivy, like your Meadow Square, or like your Seasons. Seasons is another example of a new development project, new construction project that we were involved in. So I believe this would generally run on our part, 75 to 100,000, $150,000 per unit. Generally, it's not going to address blight because it's new construction. The access to leverage and matching funds, while there's a lot out there, it's really competitive, so sometimes it can take three, four years to secure all the funding that you need to put together a successful project. And then they're very complex projects, and so it's important that we have the right partner, somebody who truly is accomplished and knowledgeable and has a successful track record of completing these types of projects. Multifamily Neighborhood Revitalization Programs. This is, this is an opportunity where an existing multifamily development's in town, we could work with the property owners or with developers who want to buy them, to rehabilitate them, to bring them up to current standards, and also within, in doing so, create affordable housing opportunities within those units. It's something that, when I worked at the city of Garden Grove, this was an extensive program for us, and it allowed us to address some of our most blighted and problematic neighborhoods, especially when it came to quality of life issues. Thankfully, in Chino, our apartment communities are generally pretty good. There are opportunities, I think, that could arise in the coming years for this, so I just wanted to put this out there, put it on everyone's plate, that this is something that we can look at. The advantages are it addresses physical and social blight along with public safety and quality of life issues. It would give, because we're loaning money and to have a deed of trust on the property and covenants, we gain some management control. We do get RENA credit for it, even though it's not a newly-built unit, it's a rehabilitated unit. It can be expensive. Again, the developer's kind of the key factor there. You can get tax credits, you can get MHP money for these types of programs. One of the other challenges is it may involve the relocation of existing tenants if significant work has to be done, or if they're over income. And if that's the case, that can get a little bit expensive. And when you're looking at a project, that's when you find out, you find out early on, is this going to be a problem, a significant problem, or is this something that is sizable enough that we can deal with it? So it's something that, and I have a couple of pictures here, neighborhoods that I think I would really like to take a look at in the coming years. This is a series of fourplexes up off Riviere Street. It's immediately south of Philadelphia, west of the commercial center on Philadelphia and central on Southwest Corner. So to the north of this, across Philadelphia, would be the school, and it's a series of fourplexes. They are 13 different owners among 18 properties. You can see that they're not terribly well-maintained. They were built at a time where there weren't standards for things like trash enclosures. So you have dumpsters sitting out in the alley, which encourages people to pollute. It would not be a simple project to complete. It would be something that would be long-term, where you're picking these things off one at a time. You might lead with code enforcement, and that would be the stick, and then your willingness to offer loans for rehabilitation and create affordability would be your carrot on the back end. So this is one area in town that stands out to me as being a potential area that something like this could work in. And then this is another area, is just on the east side of Oaks, just north of C Street, across from the school again, Sycamore Avenue, there are a series of duplexes, and they're old, they're, some are not well-kept, and there is an opportunity, I think, again, you have a large, a fairly good-sized area that just has gotten to a point where there's maybe an opportunity for us to get in there and rehabilitate, or try to work some deals to start to turn that neighborhood around, at least as it relates to neighborhood revitalization and creating affordability. And I, I mentioned this program because it, I've always strongly believed that with the limited resources that we have for housing programs, that we should generally try to always achieve two goals with every project, not just the affordability, even though that's what we're pushed to do, but also the neighborhood revitalization component. So we want to spend that money in a way that we get, we kill two birds with one stone, basically, and get our best bang for the book. And I think these are areas that we could successfully do that. Inclusionary Housing. So now moving from our programs on to more like our policy opportunities that we have. In a sense, we've had inclusionary housing at times in the city. We had it in the sense that we, in College Park and the Preserve, we required those developers to come to the table with something. We negotiated with it. We said, "We're not going to do a development agreement that does not have an affordable housing component." So you could argue that was an inclusionary housing approach. We also, with the adoption three years ago of the affordable housing and mixed-use overlay zones, those have affordable housing requirements in them. So the Eden project that was recently approved on Schaefer and Euclid, that's going to have 24 affordable units out of 267, and those are, that fits with the requirements of building in those zones. And then more recently, there was the project that was approved on Corporate Center Drive, and I think there are 11 units in there that are going to be affordable. So that is, in a sense, an inclusionary housing ordinance. What we don't have is affordable housing requirements on anything else in the city. We have what we have in College Park, which is built out, we have what we have in the Preserve, and then we have these 91 overlay sites that are part of our general plan now. And outside of that, though, and those 91 sites aren't huge, significant, I should have probably made a map to show you how much is left. And so one of the things that I think that we would look at is for residential property in the city that's zoned and is available for development, that we would consider, do we want to have a small 5%, 10% type of requirement on developers on that property for them to include affordable units within their overall market rate development? Housing Impact Fees. So this, this is a tool that's been used pretty successfully throughout California and other states from what I've been able to see, and it would be similar to the fees that both Lewis paid and D.R. Horton paid on the development agreements that we did with them, except that we would apply it not necessarily to housing, because if we do an inclusionary housing requirement, that would take care of getting something when housing is built. But these would basically be impact fees that would be assessed on new commercial or industrial development, and to help offset the impact that those developments cause, new jobs mean the new need for housing. So there's an opportunity there to collect fees, possibly on those types of developments, to help us finance our programs going forward. Affordable Housing Monitoring Fees. So we monitor every year, every affordable housing property in town, whether it's the Seasons, whether it's Ivy at College Park, Meadow Square, the 10 units up at Villa del Sol, and all our infill properties and so on. We audit those to make sure they're complying with the terms of the covenants that are recorded on their property. There, as we grow, as these 24 units at Eden come to be, and the 11 units at, over on Corporate Center Drive, and then any other units that we'd create through decisions tonight and in the future, it's going to become more and more of an impact on staff to do the audits. I don't see it as being a very big fee, but it would be a fee that we would require of property owners that have affordable units that would basically cover the costs of staff going out on an annual basis and reviewing their books, reviewing their files, making sure they're doing the proper income screening, making sure they're charging the proper rents, making sure the properties are being maintained properly. So...
Can this be applied to properties that already have affordable units, or would it only apply to future affordable units?
I think we could, and I'll let maybe Fred speak to that, but I would think we could adopt it as a user fee that applies to properties that already have them. It's a cost recovery. It's, we are providing a service, so I think it's a user fee and...
That's right. Well, I, I think I heard you say as part of the development impact fees, right?
No, it wouldn't be part of a development impact fee. It would just be a new user fee. You know, we have our, our user fees that we collect for everything from, you know, different applications and whatnot, and it would be simply, we're providing a service to you, and therefore there would be a user fee associated with it.
And so the way the fees are restricted is it has to be tied to some impact that a development is causing. So it would be fairly easy to find some nexus in that, to the extent that a development is creating an impact in the area.
But this isn't new development, it's things that have already been developed.
Be both?
Well, I can understand the new development, but could you apply it to units that are already developed that are under affordable covenants?
So I guess the question is how would, in what circumstance would it trigger the obligation for someone to pay the fee?
Could you add a fee to them?
The thought is it would be a part of their business license, their annual license for that type of business in the city. If you're a landlord, and you're a landlord that has affordable units that are directed under a covenant and an agreement, that there's an additional cost that goes in because the city provides a higher level of service on those particular properties.
So that, that would meet that nexus standard, to the extent it's to, it's imposed on, for example, multifamily units that contain affordable units. It's to recover the city's actual costs or reasonable costs of providing the service to monitor the affordability and, and any covenants that may be recorded, so yeah.
So it would only be rental properties, correct?
Yeah. We do audit our homebuyer assistance, where we've done homebuyer assistance loans like at D.R. Horton, but that's not a, we're not monitoring for price and everything, we're just monitoring more for things like occupancy and property maintenance.
So I think, I think the nexus to the user fee is exactly what you were saying, is in that we're recovering the staff cost, Fred, to conduct a, a duty, right, in order to comply with the law, with the affordability.
Sure.
With the business license, I could see the nexus, but to the mayor's point, you know, we would want to see that be attached to not only existing ones, you know, but ones moving forward, because you can see what's going to happen, because the state's going to mandate us to do more of this, that the, the time and labor and staff cost to do this is going to increase a lot over the next decade or so.
Yeah, and one thing that I failed to mention is actually within the development or the affordable housing agreements with Bridge Housing for Ivy and College Park, those were our most recent ones, and we wised up at that point, and they actually pay us an annual fee to offset the audit, because we thought, you know, this is, we, it was after Meadow Square was built, we had this increasing need to audit. So at the time we negotiated that deal, we negotiated to have funds thrown in on an annual basis to cover our expenses for conducting our audit of their property. So, and we can do that on future projects as well by all means. It can be, if it's subject to a development agreement, we can certainly do that or any kind of financing.
So the Seasons, we have a contract with the management company that takes care of the Seasons, correct?
We don't have a contract with them. It's owned and managed by a private developer. We have contracts in the sense of covenants on the property, whether it be maintenance, the terms under which the property is operated, right, what are the income limits, the fact that it's senior-only, the fact that, you know, what are the rents going to be, how they maintain the property. So, yeah, we do have a contract with them in a sense, the recorded covenants that we have on the property, but we don't involve ourselves in the day-to-day management with one exception. They have a, as part of that development project, they have a replacement reserve fund, so it's for things like new roofs, and they set aside money into it every year. It's not little things like, you know, smaller replacements, you have a, you've got to replace a faucet or something like that, but if you're doing a new roof, if you're painting all the buildings, they draw from that fund for those costs, and we have to approve that.
So you could put this fee in that agreement?
Yeah.
Add it to it.
Aren't, that reserve fund is a separate pot of money, because that is essentially to benefit that particular property, right? And it's only, it can only be drawn upon if they demonstrate a need to the city, but it's not a...
The College Park one, or...
Seasons.
Any reserve fund...
Oh, the reserve fund, yes. That reserve fund is strictly for that property, right, to recover replacement of the physical assets on that property as they reach their useful life and they age out.
Okay. Just was wondering if you could add a fee to an affordable unit that's already been rented for a number of years?
It just, as we do typically with any user fees, there's a study and some analysis as to what your staff cost, the reasonable amount of your staff cost would be, and you base the fee on that analysis. It would be completely inappropriate. You have to monitor, you have to ensure compliance with whatever covenants, et cetera.
And even if we weren't to get it on the existing units, but did have it going forward, over time, it could be very helpful.
Yeah. I understand. Okay. Thanks.
The last thing that is kind of a programmatic opportunity for us, or a policy opportunity, I'm sorry, is fee deferrals on waivers. So quite a few cities in California now, with redevelopment having gone by the wayside, use fee deferrals where they allow a developer to pay fees for things like grading permits or whatever it might be, at a later date, three years or five years after it's built. And then some cities even fully waive or partially waive some fees. Some fees can't be waived because we don't dictate them, like school fees, IEUA fees, that type of thing, but we have a lot of city fees, and that's, that's a way we can contribute to the development of an affordable housing project. So in this case, what I would, where I think you'd apply it is if you are, let's say, in a partnership with a company like a National Core that's going to build a significant project, and they're, they're out there mining the federal and state resources to build those layers of funding necessary, and then we have to fill in on the backend. One of the ways that we can do so, in addition to using our local housing assets, like our affordable housing fund, is to waive or delay or defer the payment of some fees. And so just another, again, an arrow that can be in the quiver as you try to move forward.
And if I may just piggyback on that, the suggestion you made about doing it in conjunction with a development like National Core that's already receiving public funding makes sense, because otherwise if we do it as a standalone waiver, it triggers the obligation of the developer to pay prevailing wages.
Right.
So that example is actually the right arena to do it in.
I wouldn't want to do it on, like, let's say somebody comes in on one of the infill, one of the affordable housing overlay sites, and they're going to provide 9% of the units. I don't want to consider a fee waiver for that. This is our land use, you're getting other benefits through that zoning, and therefore you can, you know, proceed normally. And so constraints, so we've talked a lot about what we can do, but to do these things, even just a few of them, it requires resources. And our recurring funding sources are very limited. If you recall back to that, that page, it's less than a million dollars a year, and some of those are very targeted, like the local housing allocation that we're getting from the state. That's generally limited to homeownership opportunities and to homeless programs and rental assistance programs. So it's very, very limited. And then the others are hit or miss. If they're loan repayments, it cycles up and down. Sometimes you have a year in which you get a significant amount, and other times there's almost nothing. So we don't really have with the, with the elimination of redevelopment, we really don't have that kind of standard core source of funding that we can rely on year over year. As far as staffing and support services go, back in the 2000s and early 20 teens when we were running the programs, those five programs that I mentioned, we had four full-time housing staff. We currently have one, and the housing division's also taken on duties it didn't have at the time. For example, the Community Development Block Grant Program, which for many, many years was run out of community services, parks, and recreation, is now managed by our one housing person. That program is, it's very bureaucratic, it's a federal program, and it takes about a quarter to one-third of that staff person's time a year to manage that program on top of doing our home improvement program. So we, whereas in the, in the past, we had four positions, we now have one, and that one is burdened with more than, than really we had back in the day. So as we consider this moving forward, any increase in programming, that any, whatever we decide to take on, whatever the council would like us to pursue, I want to just be clear that, and honest, that it can't be done with our current staffing levels. It would require additional staff. The good news is that as today with our one staff person and with others in the department that are involved in housing, such as myself and Warren at the director position, those, our salaries are partially paid out of our affordable housing resources, and that one full-time staff person's entirely paid out of affordable housing program funds, whether it be some from CDBG, whether it be some from our local fund. So as we grow in staff to accommodate any growth plans that we have, the vast majority, if not all, of the cost of those positions should be able to be funded with non-general fund monies. And then I also mentioned consultants when we're doing these types of deals. And then I also mentioned consultants, when we're doing these types of deals, it does require us to have, we, we need additional legal help because these contracts are not simple, so there's expenses involved with that. And then usually there's a financial or economic consultant that you would contract with to make sure that you're getting a good deal. So this is a, a quick overview, these are the, the programs that I all, I went through that are, like I said, I'm, I'm just putting these out there as arrows in our quiver, they could be. And, and this allows you a side-by-side comparison as to how they, they can match up against each other in terms of RENA credit, in terms of whether it's a neighborhood revitalization tool, in terms of the cost, and then also the availability of outside funding, either at the state or federal level. So we, we've put together now a series of recommendations that, from where we sit, we, we think it presents a, a good plan for us to begin moving forward with. And I'm going to share this with you, and then that's when we'll open it up to getting your, your feedback and your direction. I think first and foremost, get those six parcels developed, get homes built on them. We own the land already, and I, I did mention that infill is very expensive to do, it's true it is. But when you own the land already, you've already taken care of one of the biggest costs. So not the biggest, but a significant part of the overall cost. We own these parcels, we have the wherewithal to do it, we've done it successfully in the past. And so the idea would be to pursue the development of those affordable homes, affordable homes on those six city-owned parcels. Number two, develop a recurring revenue streams through those three different avenues that, that I mentioned. A housing impact fee on commercial, industrial, institutional development in the city, an affordable housing monitoring fee, and then as appropriate, on projects that we are spearheading in partnership with a developer, fee deferrals or partial or full waivers of fees on city-led affordable housing projects. Number three, develop an accessory dwelling unit financing program to help property owners in the city create affordable ADUs, build affordable ADUs in their backyards on their properties. Then number four is to seek to partner with developers such as National Core to develop new affordable housing communities, and we would specifically want to focus, I think, on parcels that are designated in one of our, in, in the affordable housing overlay zone specifically, possibly also the mixed use, but primarily the affordable housing overlay zone. Those, it gives us a chance to do two things. One, somewhat control the outcome of the project, of what's going to go on that particular site. The other big thing is it does for us is one of the biggest challenges, challenges in these overlay zones that is going to at some point become a problem is we only get somewhere between 9 and 13% of the units as affordable. And we have a buffer built into the housing element, a buffer of sites, and that's, the state allowed us to do that, and in exchange they approved it. But they're also monitoring us, and every time something gets built, let's say when Eden gets built, okay, well, that site, we were giving you credit for 267 affordable units, but you're only getting 24. So to the extent that we can grab one or two of these, I mean, I don't know that we could do more than, in the next few years anyway, the next decade, let's say, maybe two good-sized projects just because of resource limitations. We, on those projects, we're going to get 100% of the units affordable. So it's going to keep us ahead of that game a little bit. It's still working against us, but we won't fall behind as quickly as we would if we did nothing. Number five, evaluate an inclusionary housing requirement for residentially zoned properties, not a rate subject to affordable housing, so basic requirements, so basically anything that's not in an overlay zone. Anything that is, is zoned for residential, you'd require a small amount, somewhere between probably 5 and 15%. We, we do research to determine what's appropriate these days based on what other cities do. There are over 150 cities in California with inclusionary housing, so we're not breaking new ground, and we could, we could look and see what's appropriate and ensure that it, it wouldn't really affect the developability of those sites. Continue to implement the city's home improvement program, I think it's an important program because our residents, we have residents that need it, and our housing stock deserves the attention, I think. And then finally, and I, I leave this till last because this is, I, I mentioned is a very staff-intensive and somewhat expensive program to develop, but I do think that as our city ages, some of these neighborhoods, multifamily neighborhoods, may kind of start calling our attention, and we may not be able to ignore them, and it would just be a tool that we could deploy. Not something that we necessarily proactively do at this point, but just understand that it's a tool there available for us to take advantage of as we move forward. So those are our seven key recommendations, they are ordered in terms of what we believe are most important to least or most, highest priority, I should say, to lowest maybe. And with that, I'd like to open it up to, to, to get your feedback and your thoughts and your concerns and your questions about future housing programs and where we go as a city in trying to tackle this.
Okay, great presentation, who would like to start? Mark?
Okay, so looking at the six pieces of property that we have, what do you think it would cost us to develop those into homes?
So, uh-oh. I think we're looking at $250,000 to $300,000 per, per property, actually I don't need the map, sorry, to construct, maybe slightly higher. That, one of the advantages in what I'd recommend we do on that is when we had redevelopment, we were limited to what level of income we could, we could assist people with. And redevelopment, you know, over the years got more restrictive. It required, it requires any leftover monies from redevelopment to be used for low income or below. As I mentioned in the discussion on homebuyer assistance, helping very low and low-income families acquire a home is extremely expensive. And it, moderate income is, is a category which is, moderate income is between 81% and 120% of median income. So you're, it's, it's the middle, it's the middle group of families. If we target that group, which we can do with our local monies, no other funding source will let us target that group, but our local affordable housing fund will, those fees that we've gotten from developers through the years. And if we target that group, the sales price on the home will be around between 300 and 325,000. So the bottom line is we're going to be able to recoup almost everything that we put into the construction of those homes. So i- if we had, if we were targeting a different income group, like, like low income, for example, the sales price would be about 110, 120. We'd be leaving probably about $200,000 on the table in a loan with each home. But in this case, we're able to recover almost all of our expense because we already own this land. Now, that, that's a general kind of average, I think some of the properties are going to present, the Chino-Montevista site may present some interesting development issues. So there may be some added costs there, but I, I really believe that those six parcels can be developed with little net cost to us in the end.
Now, would we carry the loans as well?
Yeah, so we would, one of the things that we've been talking with a specific nonprofit about that has built, has built in the past, back in the Neighborhood Partnership Housing Services, they built several homes for us where they helped homebuyers come in and acquire these properties. That's their specialty, is helping people achieve affordable homeownership, but they're also a builder. So one of the things we've been talking about, they have with a number of cities done deals where the city puts the land into a, basically a trust. And the land isn't sold, the home is sold to the buyer, and the land is leased. And the lease payment's very small, it's like 75 or a hundred dollars a month. So the, the land's not held in the city's name, it's held in the trust's name, the housing trust's name. But if there, anything goes wrong with the project and the city wants, the land comes back, the city gets the land back. The home is similar to what was done with the seasons, the buildings were built by the property owner, but they're built on city-owned land that's leased. So the difference here was we create a trust specifically for it, so that's a model that we're looking into, it's, it's quite interesting. And, but the bottom line is we would have covenants, the properties when they're sold would have to be sold at affordable prices. There are restrictions on, on what they can do with the property.
Okay, now, the last one, what we talk about evaluating opportunities to redevelop older multifamily neighborhoods, I knew you said that's one of the last things that we want to potentially look at because it's expensive.
Yeah.
But isn't this something that we should now be putting our code enforcement? Because some of those things look like they're, they're a major code violation, and we should start focusing on the owners of those dilapidated buildings, start bringing them up. And hopefully they bring them up without us having to supplement it, would be the ideal. But I think some of those buildings are in dire need of, of some reinvestment by the owners. So I, I would, I understand what you're saying to do that last, but I think that's something that probably we should be pursuing anyway with our code enforcement to start dealing with those owners and start holding them a little bit more accountable to what they're letting people live in. And that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Chris, you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chris, thank you for the presentation. Like, just a couple of things I, I would want to share, if we can go back on this PowerPoint.
Yeah.
I think that, there. I'm here, Chris, I think, just for, I guess for our staff to know, I think what's most important for me on here would be the neighborhood revitalization. Yeah, so I, just keep that in mind, at least for me, you know, I, I, that would be top of mind for me when it comes to these programs. Um, no, I guess it's, it would be the home improvement program, the infill housing development program, and, yeah, and the multifamily revitalization. On the multifamily, would this also include properties that are single-family residential that have a lot big enough to put multifamily in?
As new development? Yeah, I think that's more of a infill-style program. The thought is more near larger multifamily developments, like a Villadell Soul or Park West. And, you know, I, I think, to Councilman Lucio's point, and also I think to your point, these neighborhoods are, they're speaking to us a little bit now, but they may speak to us more in the future in terms of needing our attention. And so as, but to answer your question, as, as far as developing new sites, that's kind of a, the, what the ADU program's getting at. There are, the state law is so relaxed on what can be built in, in, on properties now, just like with affordable housing where the state has removed a lot of our discretion and our authority to say yes or no to a project. Very similar on ADUs, I'm sure you've probably seen in the news some of the things that have happened down in San Diego, where there's a little house up front, and then they build 12 apartments in the back, three stories high. And so I think that would be more of something along the ADU side, but it would, in the financing program, but it'd be one that we'd want to obviously set our own set of restrictions and requirements on so that it's developed in concert with our community, and it, it fits Chino. So I wouldn't necessarily be looking to do something where somebody could really, I, I, I think to, to build something, and again, we may not be able to avoid it, if we have a developer pull the right strings or a property owner pull the right, you know, cards because they understand what the law provides, but I, I think we'd want to not encourage, is probably the best way to put it, that type of dense development in the back of a single-family property.
Along those lines, and if, can we go to the next slide now?
Yeah.
Yeah, here. Number three, the development, develop an accessory dwelling unit financing program. I'm kind of, I, I don't have an opinion on that.
Okay.
Yeah, just the, I don't know, I think there's a part of me that, you know, would argue, you know, let's leave that up to the property owner as opposed, as opposed to the city sort of incentivizing this.
Okay.
Just because of the, you had the influx of, I guess, residents it could bring to, you know, to a neighborhood. So that's on that.
Can I ask you a question on that really quickly? Would you, what if we, you know, in creating this program, we could really create any sort of rules and requirements that we wanted, we could, we could limit the size, the number of bedrooms? You know, it's not to say they couldn't do it on their own, like you said, leaving it up to the property owner. But, you know, would you be, how would you feel about a program in which it was limited? Like, they can't exceed a one-bedroom unit, they can't exceed, let's go with 600 square feet, something like that, or it can't exceed a percentage of the size of the primary home? Again, they, they can, they may be able to develop that on their own without our assistance, but if we were to be involved, they would really have to follow what we want to see.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would be on board, I think there's definitely, you know, this can be programmed in a way where, yeah, it, it does make sense. And I think a lot of this would be on a case-by-case basis as well. But, and, and that would be, to your question, that would be only to those properties that have city involvement, right? If there's a private owner who, I mean, who wants to do three, two bedrooms, then, and that's outside of, you know, the parameters we set, that would be okay.
Yeah, it wouldn't, they wouldn't be eligible, yeah, they'd have to do it on their own.
Yeah, definitely open-minded to that, and, you know, I'd like to see that. Number two, and the second bullet point here, an affordable housing monitoring fee. I'd like to see what that looks like, I'm not sure if we have a study already or what those numbers would look like, what the fees actually would be, but I'm definitely curious to see what, what those numbers, you know, what those numbers are.
Okay.
Number one, yeah, I think that, that's a big deal, I know we've talked about that, you know, in the housing committee. We've seen just the, you know, we've, the, the prices go up on just material and labor and a lot of other things. So I think, you know, the sooner the better. I, you know, with getting to these six properties, I think along these same lines, and I, and although this isn't necessarily a part of our general plan anymore, I guess what I would share with you is that I would still, I would still like for the city to pursue properties along Chino Avenue. Again, I know it's not a part of our general plan, but, you know, just planning for the future, I think, you know, if one day we do have ownership of the properties along Chino Avenue, keep pursuing those, then council and future generations may be able to have the opportunity to expand Chino Avenue. I guess those are my general comments for now, thank you, Mayor.
Director Karen?
I, I like your, your recommendations, Chris, great report. Mark and Chris pretty much touched on my questions already. I look at number three, developing the ADU financing program as kind of a double-edged sword there, you know, with the increase in density and, and numbers within a neighborhood and the parking issues that are going to go along with that. That's going to create a major, it's going to, it's creating a major issue already.
Yeah.
But I have an issue with encouraging a parking issue, and that's going to be a big thing for us in the future. I like the idea, but again, it's a double-edged sword. And, and then number seven, evaluating opportunities to redevelop older multifamily neighborhoods. You know, going in and looking at those homes that are falling in on themselves. I know you had mentioned that it's, it's a pricey endeavor, I know, for the city to go in and look at that. Are we able to go in and evaluate properties now just from the street to see if they're, what kind of condition they're in? I, I know that that's a code enforcement process, but to be proactive on homes like this that do need the assistance, how do we, how do we do that?
So we can, if we get a complaint from a resident, we can absolutely go and, and have that resident grant us access. We do not need property owner approval to access, we just need the occupant's approval to enter the property. So if we get wind of any sorts of concerns from a resident, we can absolutely go in, and then we, we run with that and, and open a code enforcement case on it. If we see something from the outside, if our code enforcement officers see conditions from the public right-of-way that indicate to them that there may be conditions inside that are detrimental to life, health and safety, that's reason for us to go and ask a tenant or the property owner for permission. When that permission is not granted, we then go to court and get an inspection warrant. The, the consent request is a requirement of getting a warrant, it has to be denied before you, you can ask the judge for a warrant. So we could then use that warrant to go and inspect the property and determine what the conditions are like and what needs to be done, if anything. And then the final thing I'd say on that is, I do know, it, it's been a long time, but there was discussion many, many years ago, I think right after I'd gone to PD it might have been, where there was some discussion at the council level about a possible requirement to inspect multifamily properties, like an annual inspection program. It, it is something that other cities do, I, I, I don't recall what the outcome of that discussion was, but that's something that is a tool available on the code enforcement side to, to the city if it wanted to do something like that, where it would, it would basically have a requirement that every multifamily property, or maybe most, you know, above a certain unit size or whatever, properties would have to be inspected by a building inspector once a year to just... would have to be inspected by a building inspector once a year, to just ensure that they're being maintained.
So I'd like to pursue that, if we're not doing that already. I don't want to go off into another area right now, but, you know, there's renters out there that are living in, you know, residences that are falling in on themselves, and really that's their only source of housing, and they're not going to complain to anybody because if they complain, the house will be red-tagged and now they won't have a place to stay.
Yeah.
So we're creating a couple of issues, good and bad. But I would like to see us pursue that a little bit more, number seven, to see what other opportunities do come up as a result of that. And Chris, income-qualified homeowners, how is that determined? Is that a county? Do they go through the county and there's some specs that they have to go along with?
No, so, the way that works is, those standards are generally set at the federal level. If it's a state-funded program, most of the state programs follow a similar methodology to determining it, but most money that's, a public subsidy that's available is targeted at assisting families at 80% or less of the median income. The median income for a family of four right now in San Bernardino County is just under 100, it's actually just over $100,000. So 80% of that, about 80. So families, a household of four, a family of four earning $80,000 or less is considered low income. They get down below about $50,000, they're considered very low income, and that opens the, that, those are the families that would qualify for a lot of the types of programs that we're talking about today. There are, those 80% and 50% levels are traditionally used in a lot of programs. Tax credits, they use, the Treasury's tax credit program, which is the largest source of affordable housing subsidy in the United States since the 80s. That uses 60% to qualify to live in those, you have to be at 60% or less, and then sometimes because of the competitive, competitiveness of getting that funding, and it's substantial funding, what you're seeing is, to get funding, you actually have developers competing saying, well, I'm going to actually lend this only to 50% or below. Not 60, the program requires 60, but I'm going to create deeper affordability. That scores them extra points on their tax credit application and gives them a better chance of getting the funding.
And then on the infill housing development program that you talked about, is that, is that true with, that, you had talked about developers and homeowners, is that true then also with the developers on, on how they're qualified, the income that goes along with that?
So the developer, they're just a developer, their income has nothing to do with it. It's all about, I mean, they're basically, we're going out to bid, we're getting proposals from contractors, developers, and we're going to negotiate with them on whatever it takes to get the project done. And the homeowner qualification is entirely separate from that, but it's just the, the actual development/construction portion of the project is just a market rate agreement between the city and the property owner and a contractor or developer that they've chosen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Karen?
Well, Chris, from, from having worked together, I'm actually really pleased with your presentation on housing. It's helped me to put our housing programs into different buckets for me to understand them. I've always known that we have all these housing operations, but tonight, the way you laid it out, it provided a lot of clarity for me, as a council member, for the first time for me in a long time, as well as hopefully to the public, about how we manage our housing stock. I'm in agreement with Councilmember Lucio on, when I look at some of the pictures of our older housing, that that is something that we should have probably already addressed through our own code. I know a lot of our code is actually complaint-driven, but it doesn't, it's, it's very evident that when we go into some of those areas, and I haven't been to some of those areas in quite some time, in fact, the last time I went, I recognized those neighborhoods when we did the mixed-use overlay maps for the housing element. We drove through them, they were in dire need of attention before, so I think you've received direction from this council that that is something that we should be addressing right away, because, like you said, the problem's not going to get better. If we don't address it, it's going to get worse. So I will just go down these one by one. Number one, of course, pursuing the development of affordable homes on the six city-owned infill parcels, yes, of course. To Chris's point, I know Chris talked about, hey, let's keep pursuing properties on Chino Avenue, but I think we, as a council, have to make a decision. Either we're going to pursue the properties with the idea of widening it, but if we go to develop those properties, we develop them on our own and pursue another one, we should just, I guess, pursue it for the same purpose of that we would be using it now. It seems like, you know, the proposal would be, we're either going to develop those homes and use them, right? Or, I mean, I guess it could change down the road, so maybe, because it looked like there was just one parcel left before we get to, you know, the back of City Hall. The other one there, right at Montavista and Chino, I think we need to be careful with that, because I know we're currently exploring all of our railroad crossings in town, even though that one on the south side there is a little bit improved. I know that there is a plan with our railroads to actually look at those and provide safe crossing in the future. We know that that is a problematic railroad crossing. So before we develop on it, I think that's one of the things that we need to consider. Number two, reoccurring revenue streams, obviously, those are all great recommendations. When I look at recommendations like this, I see this as what I would call, for us as a city, for services that we're providing as revenue leakage, so it's nice to see us looking at those things and trying to address them. So how are we, how are we addressing those moving forward, I think is perfect. The ADU dwelling unit financing program, I had the same concerns that were already expressed here, but I'm starting to warm up to ADUs a little bit more, only because of two things. If we don't do it through financing, through local control for the intended purpose of it, if we financed it for, I think, the real intended purpose, I think we're going to close some people out of the game, where other people are just going to come in and buy larger parcels who can afford it and just do it anyway. Right? So I think we need to provide ourselves with an option where local people can finance it, however they can, and maybe truly use it for what I think it's intended for, right? Or at least what we believe it's intended for, because I suppose that's open for debate as well. So I would like to see a proposal that you spoke about with Chris, because if we don't, people are going to do it anyway. They're going to go buy other parcels and land, they're going to, you know, larger people with more amounts of money, buy these parcels and just put more on them anyhow. I don't know that we could, you know, fight both of them anyway, but I would like to see us help people who want to do it at the local level to help, you know, that, because if not, we're just not going to be faced with anything but larger mixed-use overlay housing, right? That is even less conforming to our neighborhoods than some of these things. Pursuing the development of new affordable housing communities, you know, obviously we've talked about that, you know, that's something we're mandated by the state to do anyhow. Inclusionary housing, that's always, I think that's always worked out well for us in residential zone properties. I'm hoping, if we're not doing it, I'm hoping that we start to do it again, you know, moving forward, because we did used to do it, I think at one point, through DAs and different things. Am I correct?
Yeah, we negotiated through DAs and what I'm, I probably wasn't as, it should have been what I'm, what I'm speculating, what I'm proposing here is, or asking the question on, I should say, is, do we want to consider an absolute requirement that would be placed in our code on residential development in our city that's not already subject to a requirement because it's in an overlay zone or subject to a development agreement?
I think, I think that depends on the situation, whether it's, you know, what type of housing development is, infill, how many houses, right? But I think it's something that we should be asking ourselves as a staff when we're reviewing the application, right? As a part to meet our requirements.
Yep.
If I may just add another twist to that, some of these inclusionary housing ordinances, to the extent that a developer is proposing to build sufficient number of housing units, a portion of it could be required, the city can, by its code, require them to be affordable. If they're, if it's a smaller project, there are often ordinances that require some fees be paid so that the city can develop a pot of money to address that.
I think there's two issues there, to what Fred said, but also like a true inclusionary home, you know, how that is being titled and moving forward, right? Because if we don't do something about it, then it's going to lose its inclusionary title when it's sold at one point. So, of course, the city's home improvement plan, you know, not purposefully, but somehow, you know, occasionally we can get, you know, out of our lane on things, and we spend a lot of time, because of a lot of infrastructure and transportation development, getting, I think, out of, a little bit out of balance when it comes to development with larger warehouses and, you know, different, different deferred maintenance projects right now. But this presentation, and I shined a light on, hey, we better start paying attention to our housing stock, how we're going to manage it moving forward, because this is a vital part of keeping our community looking nice and that Chino feel that we all have come to appreciate. So that being said, of course, we, you know, to the point of the last one about the, you know, redeveloping older multifamily neighborhoods, we shouldn't allow for people to live, like Kurt said, in some of these conditions, and I am, I am supportive of perhaps going out there and looking at these units, because, like Kurt said, if we don't go out there and help the people that are living there, they're not going to complain because they don't want the, you know, it creates this perpetual cycle, they have, feel like they're going to have, have no other option. The last thing I'll say with this is, there's a lot here that we should be doing that we're not doing, because, because of your presentation on staff, I would recommend that you and your team bring back a proposal for us to start working on a lot of these. A lot of these are, some of these are the short game, but some of these are the long game. And, you know, put a staff together and a proposal together of a team of people you think can manage all these, because there's not a single thing on there we shouldn't be looking at managing, either in the short term or the long term, in order for the benefit of our housing stock and the vitality of our community. So that concludes my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
If I may, Mayor, just coincidentally, I just came from a board meeting of the Housing Authority of the County of San Bernardino, and the board approved a development project where it has layers of funding. So it's a low-income tax credit, there's what's called Restore-Rebuild, it's a federal program, but importantly, we still had a gap in financing, and we approached the city of San Bernardino, as well as the county, to ask if they would contribute their home funds. And those funding sources ended up closing the gap on this project. It's a 92-unit project, which is a fourth phase of a development that the Housing Authority owns, so the Housing Authority is contributing the property, so to Chris's point, that's the added value the Housing Authority provides. The benefit to the city of San Bernardino is, they get to use their housing funds and get some of the housing credits because it's in the city. So the RENA numbers and things of that nature, but sometimes it requires stacking of funding, and just interestingly enough, today they approved this project. So, one other kind of outside-the-box opportunity to look at how to leverage maybe the city's housing funds.
Go ahead.
I skipped one more question, Mayor. The $350,000 annually that we use for city-owned properties for homeowner renovation, particularly, you said a lot of that goes to seniors, is that an appropriate fund balance for us right now? You're saying we're doing approximately 15 homes a year in that? And how is that figure set, and should, should we consider increasing it to help people?
I think there are a number of factors that go into setting that figure, the biggest one being staff resources.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that seems very labor and time-inclusive, I think you use the term "holding hands" because you have to get contractors and licensing and different things.
Yeah, it's very staff-intensive.
Include that as part of your proposal to manage those things, you know, in the staff that you will bring back to council.
Okay, of course, I have notes all over the place, so try to cover it all.
Let's do it.
The six city-owned infill parcels, I'm curious, some of the parcels don't really seem appropriate for development, like the one where we had to carve out a term lane, and then the questions about the ones on Montavista. Would it be possible to sell some of those, a couple of those, pieces of land to make it more affordable to build on the ones that are more buildable? Can we do that?
Absolutely. I mean, we could dispose of the properties.
Are there any restrictions when you do that?
Because they were purchased with our money, we have quite a bit of flexibility on it. The one in particular that you mentioned that's been carved up, I had made the comment that I think our planning staff could actually design a project that could work on that. It might just be a two-bedroom home, but there's home buyers out there that'd be thrilled to get a two-bedroom home. If not, it's almost kind of a, wouldn't call it a pocket park, but it's fairly nicely landscaped right now, and there may be other public uses that we might consider for it. The Chino-Montavista one, that's a lot, those two parcels add up to over a half acre. So even if the railroad improvements do require us to, you know, take some land and space from us, there's definitely a project that can be put together on that property.
I'm wondering also on the one that's real deep.
Yeah.
Can that be lot-split? You could actually build two full homes on that one, couldn't you, if you lot-split it?
Yeah, and there, some of this, like SB9, which is a somewhat recent state law, allows properties to be carved up in some pretty crazy ways this day, these days. I don't necessarily want to use or model that type of thing, because I, I just, I don't think it's Chino. But that, those two properties combined, I have no doubt that we could get three homes on them.
And the good news, I'm sorry, Mayor, the good news about this is, by the council direction, we can explore these things. And give the council information, like this makes sense, this is undevelopable. So with the idea of it, and the idea of specifically Chino Avenue, we really were instructed by, when you were on it, Mayor, the Housing Subcommittee, is that, hey, we got to wait for the general plan and the transportation element to see if we can even utilize it, because we didn't know if Chino Avenue was going to get wider or not. Now that we know we don't need it, and I know that Dennis has creative ideas in the future when we do the downtown, how to fit that in, fit that in even though we're not widening it, but the good news is they're available and we can explore that and definitely feed you with better, or give you more information on it, and kind of tell you what, what the different options are.
Okay. Then also, is there a possibility that we could work with Habitat?
So Habitat of San Bernardino County, it's my understanding that they have wrapped up operations, they were going through some financial struggles. So, as of right now, there isn't a local Habitat chapter, that doesn't mean that chapters outside of the immediate area wouldn't be able to do something. I think Habitat International would dictate how that all works, because I'm sure they have kind of their areas that they're entitled to work in, so as of right now, Habitat is questionable, is an option for us.
I think I would like to encourage you to be creative. And see what you can come up with on those parcels.
Okay.
Especially if, you know, if it's possible to sell one or two that would allow building, you know, better on the remaining four, whatever.
Okay.
One issue to keep in mind, when the city sells property, it has to follow the Surplus Land Act, which basically means that if it's over a half an acre, we have to offer it up to various developers that sign up with HCD as well as other public agencies, but that nevertheless gives us an opportunity to negotiate with various housing developers, so it's just a step that the city would have to keep in mind.
Okay. The reoccurring revenue streams, when Kurt brought up the older multiple units to do maybe a yearly inspection fee, that would fall under new revenue also, right? Wouldn't you have to implement a new fee in order to be able to do that to every multiple unit?
You would, and arguably, with a city our size, it would probably require an increase in staffing and the building inspector and code side, and so I think the revenues, being a user fee, correct me if I'm wrong, Fred, but the object of a fee is to offset your cost of providing that service. So it would generate a revenue to cover the expense of operating that particular program, not any of the programs that we've discussed here today, but it's still, coupled with what we're doing here, would make, I think, for, it would make us a better city, it would provide us with additional tools, additional resources to make sure that our residential property in town's being maintained at the level that we expect it to be maintained at, and that we can be proud of our housing stock.
Doesn't the fire department require inspections of those multiple units? Or is it only industrial and commercial that they inspect?
I don't know. That's a great question. I do know that they're out doing, I mean, when I was at PD, they inspect PD once a year, they do a lot of the big buildings, but I don't know that they, what they require in regard to residential properties.
Okay. Well, you had mentioned new fees on commercial and industrial in order to support housing, so maybe there's a whole fee package. Now, Linda, you have mentioned that we're looking at our fees, maybe that can all be wrapped up to support looking at multiple housing as well? Okay. God, I wrote all over the place. Let's see. Oh, on multifamily, you mentioned, you know, the units on Philadelphia there that are starting to age, along Ninth Street?
By the bank?
Yeah, across from- Yeah, across from where M.K. Smith's repair, those units.
Yeah.
I know particularly a lady that used to live in those units that travels to another country for a couple of months a year. She came back and it was just rat-infested. So I think those units, even though maybe they're not as visible as the ones on Philadelphia, units like that also need to be inspected because they're getting pretty run down. And the one south of the post office, the alley there, there's, we have a whole bunch in town that are getting older, that are getting pretty run down.
Agreed, Mayor.
Question about infill projects, what are we going to do with the old community garden? And is there a possibility of building more senior housing like the Seasons on that piece of property?
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, from what I remember, we looked at that, filling that in with more units. And at that time, the idea was to really make it work, it would have to be two-story. And then at that time, I believe that issue was, an elevator was involved in the process, so it made it very, very difficult to build, to the extent of, hey, maybe we would just push it back. I don't know how it was revisited or if ever was revisited there. I do believe the property is a zone commercial that would allow the expansion of that, but there are also other opportunities that, like I said, that's commercial there in that corner. So we could revisit looking at it, but that's what I seem to remember, is there was difficulty in actually building the units because...
Is that part of our downtown master plan?
It is.
Do you know?
It goes all the way to Fifth.
Yeah.
Goes all the way to Fifth Street.
What, do we have that zoned? Do you recall?
Well, it's zone commercial.
It is commercial, okay. Never mind then.
Yep.
Let's see. You talked about covenants, like on the rental units, but on units that we have restricted to low and moderate income, when someone qualifies to buy one and then they turn around and sell it, like the one that you mentioned where we made a profit on the loan.
Yeah.
Is it still restricted to have to be low and moderate?
If it's an ownership product, our loans historically have traditionally allowed the homeowner, the seller, two options. One is they can sell it at an affordable price to an eligible homebuyer, or they can sell it at market rate, but that requires them then to pay us not only the full principal of the loan back, but also an equity share. So the theory being that we can then have, we now have the money to create a new unit in its place. That obviously means that we have to go out and do work, but generally, in the past, we've offered those two options to sellers.
So we help our count with low-income housing, then we possibly lose it and have to replace it?
Yep. And one of the reasons that in the past that I had always offered, and it's not all of our loans, but we often did it, was there was the fear that when you're doing a calculation to determine what's the affordable sales price of a home, interest rates play a huge role in that. And if you were a homebuyer that purchased a home and were assisted by the city and you were able to get, let's say, a 4% mortgage, and then two years from now, you have a life event forces you to sell your home, but interest rates are at 6%, you're going to lose money.
Yeah.
Even if the property's gone up in value, it's gone down because the interest rates are higher now, so the buyer's coming in is able to afford less of a loan, and, you know, the same payment gets you less of a mortgage, and now you're going to turn around, here you were in a, you know, homeownership situation where most people, over time anyway, accrue some property, and here you're being forced to settle a loss, even if the market has climbed. And that always kind of made us nervous that we would be the cause of that. So we built most of our loans to offer that as an out, in a way, even though it did bring work, additional work for us to have to do.
Okay. Let's see. The ADU issue. For me, that's a difficult one because I know where we're building ADUs in neighborhoods on narrow lots, we're creating parking nightmares, and we're already having nightmares with parking. So I don't know if I want to encourage us in incentivizing issues or not. That's one hesitancy I have.
Okay.
Because I know there's really, you know, especially where they're enclosing garages already, and then maybe they add an ADU, and all of a sudden, instead of two or three cars, there's eight cars, and their neighbors don't have anywhere to park.
Yep.
So I'm not, I'm not really excited about doing that. I agree with what Karen said, you know, maybe it's better for us to be involved and have people in there, and it's happening, people out there with money are buying up the big lots so they can build the ADUs, but at the same time, for us to be involved in it, I'm just a little hesitant about that.
So if I could follow up, or ask a follow-up on that as I, kind of along what Chris's concerns were, is, you know, we'd have the ability to bill in, to create whatever set of requirements we wanted to on this program. So perhaps in addition to limiting the size of the unit, we could also require that there has to be on-property parking for that unit.
I don't think, it's my understanding, we can't require that anymore as of July 1st.
You don't require, even if we're lending?
No. So that's very restrictive, as you guys know. It seems like when we get together and talk about code update, when it has to do with ADU or parking, we always have to tell the council or the planning commission, we have no ability to regulate it based on parking. And it changes every day. Not only parking, it's standards, it's setbacks, it's building heights. We just heard that in the era that we used to require ADUs to be one-story, if they're in one-story neighborhoods or zoning, that is larger lots, now the state's allowing two stories with the cities not having the ability to regulate that. So it's ever-evolving, and it's always less and less restrictive. Parking's one of them.
So along those lines, though, Fred, would we not open up the opportunity, if we're going to be putting funding into something to create those types of rules, it's like, hey, you can play by the state rules, you just don't get our money. If you want to get our money, you got to play by our rules.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting scenario, and I think we would have some leverage there.
Yeah.
Because they're not just simply applying, taking advantage of the ADU laws, they're also applying under our program, and our program could have some condition.
Yeah.
If they don't like our program, they could simply do what the state allows.
Yeah.
So I think that there may be an opportunity there.
Look, we're caught in the middle, so let us look into it.
Okay.
I think for that, you know, it doesn't matter if you require the parking or not, you're still going to have a massive issue on the streets around the properties. It doesn't matter. It's like, it's like garages, you know? People will, you know, require parking in the garages, people are going to store all their stuff in it, so now they're going to be parking on the streets.
Sure.
So it's going to create a problem.
I think the one way we should look at this, though, is if we have more local control over the project that they're building today, we might like the project that they're going to build today versus the project or the ADU that they're going to build five or 10 years from now.
True. Except what Warren was saying, now they can build two-story if they want in a one-story neighborhood.
But if we, if we offered the financing, maybe we could have more local control over our standards. Yeah, so maybe we can just have a look at both.
Look into it.
Yeah.
I think we've already kind of supported this ADU thing because we already have pre-planned plans for three different types of ADUs in size that we give away for free because we know at least if they go with our plans, we know that's something that is built to our standards and something that obviously we like. And then same thing if we, and we're not giving them all the money for the ADU, we're only giving them a portion of the money. But if they want to take that portion of that money, then they need to adhere to certain standards, and I think that goes to what Karen says. We can't put some limits on what they're able to build if they want the money. If they don't want the money, they can go and get their own financing, and then we have no say-so anyway.
And I think it was you, Mark, that was telling me, Mayor, you might find this interesting. If the ADU gets over a certain amount of square feet, I think it's 1,200 square feet, then you have to pay additional fees to the fire district and to the school district that are...
Can't be over 1,200.
Yeah, yeah.
1,200 is the absolute limit, correct?
But if it gets to that, yeah, they had to pay, they had to pay additional, very hefty fees to those two entities, so they may be incentivized to keep them smaller with more local control. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. Like you're getting into some of those larger, larger ADUs and their expenses.
I know, we're looking at it.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
We're in the middle of it, I know.
Mayor, may I quickly chime in? I know one issue you've brought up in the past, Mayor, is not just the parking issue, but also the, like, the infrastructure issue. And so, I mean, where are we with all that? I mean, if this is a plan, whether we pursue or not, and I know that's not the topic for tonight, but I mean, it does chime into the accessory dwelling unit issue. How do we move forward knowing that, well, there's going to be, you know, X amount of ADUs coming in, and our infrastructure more than likely may not support?
Yeah, that's a great question. We struggle with that with any of the provisions that we've been dealing with, including the affordable housing overlays. Now it has density in places we didn't think we would have density. So that's, that's a great question. For now, we are, and I know HJN's team is looking into it, the idea of that, where do we go with it? But in general, it's case-by-case now. So we do, development comes in, it studies and make sure that we have the appropriate utilities to build that facility, so it's case-by-case now. In terms of the master plan for that, it's so new, we would have to get to that and try to figure that out and then brief you guys. When, I'm not sure, you know, the timeframe before we can do that, but for now, it's case-by-case.
Along those lines, since we're going through, we are going through it, there had to be an inspection, it has to be a fire hydrant, it has to be certified. What if someone or a neighborhood is all building ADUs and staff determines the sewer lines can't handle it? We're not allowed to charge fees to upgrade the sewer line. Would we legally be able to say, no, you can't build?
Yes, we haven't run across that yet.
But we will, I'll bet you.
So we will, where we'll have to work through an issue. And I'm not sure, Mayor, how we would deal with it, how it would, how we would allow for it without the utilities. All I can say is we haven't dealt with it yet.
Well, I think that's something we need to be prepared for because I think it's going to happen. Remember when we had water restrictions? And remember what happened to a lot of the old neighborhoods because of the low-flow toilets? All of a sudden, the mass wouldn't go down the pipes because they were too corroded and too small, unintended consequences. I think we're going to face this in the future.
Can we have HJN speak on this or real quick? Can you speak to that really quick, just to explain that?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, we are in the process of doing a water and sewer master plan update to address all these concerns. Yeah, one of the concerns that we do have is we don't have a good track of where the ADUs are being built and how much sewer contribution it's making to our sewer system. If it's in the upper zone, we're fine, but as they're getting down to a southern part of town, when all the ADUs and additional housing intensity have increased, we're going to have a concentration of accumulated sewer flow on the down, on the southern part of town that's going to become a capacity issue. So we're doing a sewer master plan update to address some of these intense land use that we did not plan for. But similarly with the water, we're not so concerned about the water as much because our water system probably could handle some of these ADUs. However, if we are forced to build high-rises, then we're going to have problems with fire flow in serving the high-rises, which means they're going to need to probably upsize their fire pumps and such. So that's going to become an issue when we are building high-rises.
You know, along that line, HJN, our whole north area is served by Montevista. Are we working with Montevista on that study to ensure that they're going to be able to serve whatever the county feels like doing in the sphere of influence?
Yeah, I think they have their own master plan. I know that they have recently updated, or they just recently opened their water plant, the water treatment facility, to have additional supply for their increased demand. So I know that they're, they're doing their own part to make sure they're planning for the future.
Okay.
So we're doing something likewise.
Fred?
So if I may, just wanted to confirm it with the ADU law. Essentially, the law says that a local agency shall not consider ADUs as a new residential use for purposes of calculating connection fees for capacity charges for utilities, including waters and sewer services. But the provisions don't apply to ADUs when they are constructed concurrently with a single-family home. So what that's essentially saying is...
You can't do anything about it.
We can't do anything about it. I think the state just assumes, well, there's already a single-family home or the main home, so there must be sufficient service, without really understanding these capacity issues that HJN just described.
Okay. Number five, inclusionary housing. We used to be, we used to give density bonuses, right? And you mentioned maybe mandating affordable housing in developments, but how would you do that in small developments? Like maybe 10 houses or less? Can, do you think, or five houses or less in a small infill project? Do you think...
It's very common that inclusionary housing ordinances have a minimum size that they apply to, and there is an alternative requirement for smaller projects. So usually, oftentimes, it's 10 units or less, they would pay a fee. They're not required to build the unit, or they're not required to create that affordability within their project, but they pay a fee towards the city, and that's used to, you know, finance affordable housing programs. The larger properties are not exempt or don't have the opportunity to go after that fee. They have to absolutely include the affordable units within their development.
Is there any way we can increase the number of affordable units that are going to be built in large units? Like 24 out of 200, almost 300 units is ridiculous. I mean, we have thousands of units that we're supposed to comply with. We will never get there at the rate it's going. How do we increase that?
So that's kind of driven by market economics. When the affordable housing overlay and mixed-use overlay zones were created and we looked at the different percentages, Kaiser Marsden was hired by the general plan consultant to do an economic analysis of land development costs in our area and determine what's the maximum that we could impose, the maximum requirement that we could impose without basically making the project not viable, where a developer could still come in and make the project happen. Because we're not trying to shut down development, but we're trying to squeeze blood from a tournant, for lack of a better term. And how much can we ask for without completely blowing up the financial feasibility of the project? So the percentages that were created within the affordable housing overlay and the multi-use affordable development overlay, those are based on what Kaiser Marsden felt the market could support. Anything above that, they felt would be, would probably kill the deals.
Okay, so we can't do anything about it. The PLHA fund, you mentioned that can be used for the navigation center?
Yes, ma'am.
A yearly fee on that?
Yes, it can be used for some of it.
For some of it, but not all of it?
Not all of it. Yeah, because the, that allocation fund has a requirement that at least 40% of it be used towards homeownership opportunities.
Oh, okay.
So that reduces then the amount that we get and the amounts that we're discussing right now, or that have been proposed that the city would pay, are above the remaining balance. So it would pay, it can pay possibly a substantial portion of it, but not based on the current numbers that we've been discussing, not the entire amount.
And then we had a project that was proposed down on Chino Hills Parkway that has not moved forward. Is there any way that we can work with National Core and take that over and propose a different development? Was that land actually purchased by that developer? Oh, it was.
So the property currently was approved and it's entitled. The applicant did do a time extension. The applicant's actually working with the city to look at other options because of the financing, or because of financing that development. From our understanding, they want to work at reducing the density, and they're looking, they're working with Fred and the Development Services team to go through options that could possibly be supported by the city. So we're in the discussions with them to determine, you know, how would you modify? Can the city support it? Does it make sense? Is it allowed by law? That kind of thing. The applicant still owns it and is still is interested in development in some way. The applicant still owns it, and it still is interested in development in some way.
Is there any more, are there any possibilities of partnering them with something like National Corps? And turning that into a 100% affordable project? Do you think he'd be amenable to that?
I don't know, Mayor. We can definitely ask. Because we have contact with them, we can definitely ask if they would be willing to look at other options.
Well, it certainly would help our numbers, and it's right on a major transportation corridor, and it's right close to shopping, so I think you could check all the boxes. The only thing that's not directly next to is a grocery store, but it's certainly close to a lot of other amenities. I think that's all I have. That's all my notes. Thank you very much for a very, very good presentation. Yes.
I just wanted to point out to the council, and Chris sort of alluded to it. So, the goal to Councilmember Comstock's thought or statement is that, because it's so much going on, that the goal is to develop a strategic plan. So, Chris is going to lead a strategic, a housing strategic plan. So, we'll work through the committee process, and then to the council. So, you can see, today, when we're all gone, they'll know what the priorities were of the city, and how we're moving forward with this housing stuff. So, we want to develop a strategic plan, and we'll bring that to, again, the Housing Committee, and then to ultimately the council, so we can basically get it approved, and that's what the city will do in the future, based on...
Well, I think it would be a good idea if you could extract out of that big overall plan, the fee structure, and get that implemented, so that we can at least get the inspections going.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on to item number two.
Mayor, can we take, like, a quick five-minute break?
Sure. All right, we will have a five-minute break.
To present the fund balance policy. It is something that we normally would do as part of the budget process. But as you know, a lot of things were happening during the budget development. So here we are tonight. Okay. So tonight, we will review and discuss the current fund balance policy. As the city continues to grow and adapt to changing financial, economic, and community needs, it is really important that our policies remain aligned with best practices and provide clear guidance for financial stability. And one of them, one of that such policy is the fund balance policy, which plays a very critical role in ensuring that the city maintains sufficient reserves to manage our cash flow and safeguard against unforeseen emergencies and support long-term fiscal sustainability. So before we dive into the details of fund balance, I'd like to take a moment to clarify what a fund balance is so that we're all, we all know what we're talking about. A fund balance is essentially the city's savings account within each governmental fund. And tonight, we'll be talking more of the general fund, okay? It represents the difference between what the city owns and what it owes at a given point in time. So as of, for example, at June 30, we will establish what the fund balance is, the actual fund balance is. It is the city's net resources available after we met all of our short-term obligations. So in this picture, you will see assets, everything that we own, cash, accounts receivables, land, minus all our liabilities. So that's our AP bills, short-term loans. And whatever is left is called the fund balance. And the fund balance is basically our net worth. In our personal life, we would call that our net worth. And the Government Accounting Standards Board, also known as GASB, requires that fund balance be categorized into these five categories that you see listed on the right side. Non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. And I will later go into more detail about each of these categories and what they mean. Linda is going to go over the history of the fund balance that the city of Chino has adopted over the past like 25 years.
As you know, this is a relatively new team. So we've been doing a lot of research to see how we've gotten to today. So in 2000, the, the fund balance that was established, so we had a, a working reserve of 10% of the annual adopted general fund budget. So let's say our general fund budget was 100,000, $100 million. So that would have been $10 million. Is my math correct on that?
Yes.
And then we also established an emergency reserve of two, 2.5, so that we set that aside. So you know, earthquake or other things that happen, we'd have money set aside. Then we did a one-time reserve for initial startup costs for the preserve because at that time, we were just getting ready to get into the development agreement and we knew that project was coming. So that was 2000. Then we come up to 2007, and then we made a revision to that policy. And essentially, we said we're going to have a working reserve of 15% of our general expenditures. And I know I'll do that math again. So 100, 100 million, 15 million, we're going to set aside for that. Then at that time, we removed the 2.5% on the emergency and said up to $10 million that we wanted to have in reserve again for emergencies. So the next time that we adjusted it, do you want to go to that slide and have me talk about it? Or do you want me to talk about the, the GASB now?
I will talk about the GASB in the next slide.
And then I'll talk about the next time we updated our, our reserve. So this is the last time we did it in 19. This is the last fund balance that we have on record. So we believe that this is still in place. So, and we highlighted the color so you can see. So we're annually going to monitor our fund balance with the goal of maintaining a minimum of 15% on ongoing expenditures. Should the actual general fund reserve fall below 50% on ongoing operating expenditures, a hiring freeze would be in place and we wouldn't replace any existing positions if someone left. The hiring freeze would continue until the city council approves an acceptable plan to bring the city's fund balance, ongoing operating revenues as defined below, back up to 50%. So this requirement will commence with fiscal year starting in 20, June 20, or July, July 1st in 20, and will continue until repealed by the city council. So that's what we're here tonight, is to look at our fund balance, repeal this one, and establish a new one that we will then bring back as a formal resolution for the council.
Okay. So before we start establishing how much and how much of the reserve will go into what category, I wanted to take a moment to explain GASB Statement Number 54 and what each of those categories means. So GASB 54 is also called the Fund Balance Reporting and Governmental Type Definitions Statement. It was issued in March of 2009 and became effective for the financial statements that ended in June 30, 2011. Its purpose was to improve clarity and consistency in fund balance reporting by replacing the old reserved, unreserved term that was previously used with five new categories. These are non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. So the non-spendable represents resources that cannot be spent because they are either not in spendable form or are legally, contractually required to remain intact. So as an example, that includes accounts receivable, inventory, prepaid items. So when we do and finish closing the fiscal year end, the auditor will determine, going through the, the asset list, which of, of these assets are non-spendable. So you cannot, for example, you cannot spend an accounts receivable. You cannot spend an inventory. In order to make them spendable, you would have to actually sell those assets so that you can spend them. So I would like to, I normally like to compare that to, to my personal life when I tell somebody that I have, let's say, a million-dollar net worth. I own a million-dollar net worth. But then they would not know what's included that, in that million dollars until I break it down for them and say, well, that million dollar actually includes, you know, $5,000 in cash. I only have $5,000 in cash in my checking account, and that's all I have. And the rest are tied up in my home equity. I cannot spend my home equity unless I sell my house, okay? So it's important to basically break down what's in your net worth. And in this case, it's important to break down what is in the city's fund balance, okay? So restricted, restricted is specific to purposes for, are constrained by external parties or enabling legislation. And examples of these include grants, bond proceeds, revenues that are restricted by the state law or the federal government. So the next category would be committed. The committed item are resources constrained by formal action of the government's highest decision-making authority. And for the city of Chino, that is the city council. You are the policymaking authority. And so if, if we are to make a policy to reserve an amount, that would go under this committed line item. And the only way to use this is to uncommit it. So the staff would have to come back to the city council to request us to use anything that is reserved in the committed line item. And formally set aside means it is done by resolution or ordinance. The next category is assigned. It is resources intended for specific purposes but not formally committed. They are assignments that are typically made by the governing body or a delegated official, such as the city manager. Example would be, would include departmental carryovers, budgeted appropriations that are not yet spent. These funds are earmarked, but they're flexible. They reflect the managerial's intent and can't be reallocated without a formal council action. The last category is unassigned. It is the residual resources that are available for any purposes in the general fund. So examples include general fund surplus, unallocated revenues, or... So this, this category would be the category that we would use when we use up our current operating budget within the fiscal year revenue. And if we don't have enough revenues during the year, we would dip into the fund balance, right? And the unassigned would be the category that we will dip into, okay? So sometimes, unassigned balance can be negative amount. That means our net worth is tied up mostly in non-spendable, restricted, committed, or assigned. So we have more of that, and so it leaves unassigned to be negative, which means basically that we're spending more cash than we have, okay? So normally, the city government would not fall into that situation? Right. So the negative happens when you spend more cash than you have. But how can one spend cash that they don't have?
You can't.
You cannot. Therefore, it means that you have to borrow money. So...
But then that would be a liability. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a fund balance. It'd be your liability.
Yes. So when the city closes the audit, they will look to see that if there is negative cash balance, then they would reclassify the negative and make it a zero cash and turn that into a due to other funds, because now we're using other funds' money. This happens in, let's say, working capital, enterprise funds, where we still have a positive fund balance. For example, let me use it as, I'm going to use our personal example just to make it easier to understand. So like, my checking account, I have a negative cash. But my husband's checking account is positive. So I could still buy a car using his checking account because we are still in the same family, okay? We, we share the same checking, we, we share the same family household income even though we kept our checking account separate. So in, in example of, let's say, the general fund, let's say, I am the general fund and I don't have cash, but the Internal Services Fund, the Employee Benefit Fund, does have cash. So I will use the money from there to buy what I need to do. And so the problem is, when we do the financial statement, my checking account, my general fund reflects a negative cash. But the other Internal Service Fund, we, does have a positive cash. In GAAP accounting, because we are in the same family, my debt and my, my negative and the other funds' positive will net each other out to zero. And in GAAP accounting, you don't want to report that because there's a net zero effect. So that if you're just looking at my checking account, it may overstate my fund balance in assets. So therefore, the GAAP accounting shows that we should basically write it off and not show that.
Why don't, why don't we move on? Because I think that's getting it more complicated.
Yeah, it is. So I will go into that in the next slide where it, it could happen, where na, where unassigned fund balance could be negative. So per the Chino's policy from 2011, at that time, the policy says that when we set an operating reserve, it should reside in the unassigned category. So because of that policy, we've been putting our reserve in the unassigned category. So you never really see it. It's not as transparent. So if we are to adopt a fund, a reserve policy this time, I would recommend that we put that amount under the committed line item so that you could see it more clearly.
Can we see, because I know the hour is getting late. Can you take our balance the way it is right now and show us how you would allocate it in these classifications? Are you, are you going to do that tonight? Or is it just...
So I'm going to go the next few slides with some visuals. This is a 10-year history of Chino's fund balance. This is taken from the financial report in the statistical section where we always give a 10-year trend. In this picture, you will see the ending fund balance. So it's positive, okay? So you don't see the breakdown within each of these amounts. And then on the next slide, I will show the breakdown of what makes up these totals. So this is the same fund balance. So on this one, I show the green bars. On this one, it becomes the green line. So those bars now becomes the green line. And within this fund balance ending total, we break it down into two categories. The city only have been using two categories. The yellow bar represents the non-spendable fund balance. So as you could see, from 2017 is about 4.6 million. In 2018, it went up to 73, and so forth until 2023. And then the red bars represent the unassigned fund balance. So if you net the 73 million plus the negative bar, the red one, about 18 million, you get a net total of about 56 million, which is the green line, let's say, for 2018. So, so as you know, the city, in 2008, wanted to, to pay down the unfunded liability. And so at that time, it also created an internal borrowing and investment structure between the general fund and the Internal Services Fund. And also, in, invest in the portfolio, the 73 million as an investment. So it's a bit complicated. So it was booked that way until 20, fiscal year 24, when the auditor recommended that the city write off the, the receivable so that we don't, or basically, show this receivable anymore. And that's why in fiscal year 24, you'll see that the, the yellow bar kind of dropped down to about 2 million. And during the restatement of that fund balance, then the unassigned balance starts to go up. In 2022, if you could see there, is, the red bar kind of went up on the positive side. During those two years, it was during the pandemic, and the city received CARES Act money and ARBA money, so for about 15 to 18 million dollars. So that is the reason why the red bar starts to show positive again. Okay. So for fiscal year 25, 26, we projected the unassigned balance to start growing. And that's what we've been doing with the revenue enhancement projects that we're working on. So zooming into just the last three fiscal year, this is what is showing up in fiscal year 24. This is from the financial statement. We show 2.3 million in non-spendable fund balance and about $30 million in spendable, unassigned fund balance. Within that 30 million are the, the current reserve, which is about 15 million. The, I think the 15 and the 2.5 million is resides in that 30 million figure. So for fiscal year 25, that just ended, we are estimating about 35 million. And for next year, June 30, 2026, we estimate it to grow to about 37 million. So the purpose of tonight's discussion is for the city council to, you know, give, make a recommendation as to how much of that 37 million should be reserved in the committed line item. So in this slide, I'm showing different scenarios. Under the yellow section is for the city council to make a recommendation for us. And we need to decide how many months we need to reserve. For example, when I say number of months, during, for, in a period of one fiscal year, we have 12 months. So when we want to do a reserve, we determine how many of the 12 months should we make a cash reserve available in case of emergencies? So if we were to reserve one month, that equals to 8.3%. Two months will be 16.7%. And currently, our policy is at two months, which is about 17%, 17.5%. So if you go across, the formula would go like this. The percent times the general fund operating expenditures, which we estimate to be about 120 million per year, times the percentage would equal to the amount to be reserved. So in the amount to be reserved, as you could see, two-month reserve would equal to about $20 million. So on the, the next column, for year-end June 30, 26, we're estimating that the year will end with a $37 million in fund balance. So if we have to reserve 20 million for two months and we only have 37 million, that means after we set aside 20 million, we have $17 million left, okay? So the more we reserve, you could see that we don't have enough fund balance to, let's say, reserve a six-months operating reserve. Because that means we would have to reserve 60 million, and we only have 37. So right now, we recommend that if we want to go above the two-month reservation, we could go to three months, which will allow us to set aside 30 million. And then we would have 7 million left. And then we could possibly set a reserve to target a 50% rainy day fund, which means at minimum, we should have 30 million. But each year, as our fund balance increase and grows, we would set aside a little bit of the time into the committed fund balance until we reach the 50% mark. So this is where we're at. And I'm opening the floor for the city council to provide your input and recommendation.
We have funds that are committed for capital improvement programs. Have then, all of those funds that have already been committed, have they been taken out of this fund balance already?
Not yet.
So we really can't determine how much we want to set aside unless we know what we already have committed to be spent in the next year. Because we know we've already made commitments on some capital improvements and stuff.
So that's why we have to leave enough left and not put it in the committed line item.
But we don't know how much that is. So I think before, for me personally, because I've done this before when I was with the Conservation District, we have to know everything that we've committed to in the next coming year. Before we can determine what's really free in order to set aside the reserves.
Yes. So for fiscal year 25, 26, we have committed or assigned about 2.7 million for capital projects that have already been appropriated from the prior year that is continuing to be spent for this next fiscal year.
Okay. But we have a helicopter that's coming. We have other fees and, and other commitments that we have that, that is not identified in this.
Right. So, so whenever we have those projects, we are hoping that we will use the current year operating revenues to cover those expenditures.
Can I jump for clarification? For this year's budget, 25, all of the capital projects that we have budgeted for this year are in the 25 budget. If there, and then we have our five-year capital plan. So because we're trying to set this for next year, we have our five-year capital, so the 2.6 is what we have set aside for 26. And then as you move out in our five-year capital plan, there's a certain amount. But that will be budgeted in the 26 year. And as we look at, you know, this general fund operating of 120, it'll incorporate in there in next year's budget. This year, like the helicopter is already in our budget for this fiscal year. But what we're trying to do is set it for 26. So if Kim says we don't know what 26 is, it's because we haven't brought that budget to the council yet. But if we're talking this year, the two point, is that next year's capital? But what's this year's capital? For 25.
It's already been budgeted.
Right.
For 25 is last year's budget.
Right. So I think when you ask the question, is it 26 or 25? 25, our budget is set, we know it. For 26, we want to set our fund balance so that as we are budgeting things, we know how much money we have to spend.
So when you talk 25, when you just say 25, you mean fiscal year 25, 26?
Yes. This, this policy will be...
Or are you talking 24 or 25?
The policy will be effective 25, 26.
25, 26.
That we're in right now.
Okay. So the 25, 26, which we're already in, you already have in our budget, budgeted what we think we're going to spend on capital and everything else, right? So when you talk about this fund balance, it really is money that's there.
Yes. That's our estimated.
Yeah. No, I understand that.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So we currently have 15% plus the little bit for hazard, which is about 17 million. Our recommendation today is that we set it at 30 million in the committed with a, with a goal... with a, with a goal to grow that up to six months' worth, which is 50%. And that will take us some time because as you saw, our fund balance has kind of gone up and down over time. Measure V will help with that. But we want to set it at 30, set that aside in committed. That means we can't spend that money unless we come back to the council and say, hey, we want to spend it on whatever it is that the council would like to spend it on. But then every year, when we do the audit, we will come back to the council in the audit. Let's just use some round numbers. Let's say we do the audit and we saved 20 million dollars. Then we'll say to the council, would you like to put some of that into the committed fund? We could set a percentage and we can say, every year we have a surplus after the, after the audit, let's put 10% automatically into the committed fund so that we have, so that we can grow that up to six months or 50%.
Okay, so you want the 30 million in committed. You want the 7.2 million in unassigned?
Can you pop back to the other? So we would move 30 up and then seven would stay in the unassigned, correct, Kim?
But then in order to use the unassigned, you're going to have to come to council to use that money, correct? And you've accounted for any raises, cost of living, all of the negotiated stuff that we've gone through? No?
The only one we haven't accounted for yet is ASME and Teamsters, correct?
Correct.
Because we haven't settled those yet. So that one, Teamsters will come to the council meeting on Tuesday. We're still working with ASME, hopefully that will come in a meeting after that. Then it will be incorporated into the budget.
Okay, so these numbers are going to change after Tuesday night? If those are settled? Okay, what else is not looked at yet? What else are we looking at that we don't know?
We just have to keep in mind what we have taken to council from July 1st on. That's general funded.
And that has not come out of this yet?
No.
Okay, see Linda, there's still more that we need to know. I mean, I, I don't mind the 30,000 million, but the 7 million, I don't think is 7 million. And I think we need to know what that is.
What do you, you want, well, we will know that number when we do the audit at the end of the year, after we spend it down. But we won't take anything and just go spend money until we come to the council and say. And one of the things that when we approved our budget and we had the four and a half million dollar surplus, like that number set aside, so they're tracking in the finance department. If we take something to the council that's a non-budgeted item, it's coming off that four and a half million. And every time we do that.
Where's that, is that four and a half million in this 7 million?
Well, this is at the end of this year. We're saying we're going to end the year with 39 million, estimated, right? But what, but that's, this is fund balance, actual money, which is different than our budget. Because when we approve the budget, we approved a surplus, right? Which is all rolled into here.
So yes, the 37 million estimated includes a surplus. So when we set, when we set the policy like this, we go by a percentage. In the policy, it will say that we will seek to have a 30% rainy day funds. However, when we close the audit, if we don't have 30 million, we won't put 30 million, right? We would put only an amount that is enough. That's why we have to also determine how much we want to have in the unassigned category in case we overspend on our budget and start dipping into the general fund balance. So the, the policy itself, when you do, when you do set a high threshold and you can't meet it, the GFOA requires us to make a plan on how to start meeting that policy threshold.
Well, Kim, I understand all that. What really bothers me is, is I'm still obsessed with thoroughly accounting for our Measure V money, okay? And really looking at what we've committed moving into the future. And accounting for everything that we know we've approved now, starting July 1st, right? Moving forward, what we're anticipating spending. I don't, I don't want to put 30 million into something and say 7 million is unrestricted when we know we don't have, we, I know it's estimated at the end of '26, but maybe we know right now that we've got stuff we're not accounting for that's going to impact that. So I don't want it to look better than what it is.
So.
That makes sense.
So for like Measure V items, if we decided that we're going to commit or put aside money, we could put that in the ass- assigned fund balance.
Well, I mean, we're spending it on capital improvement programs, but the accounting of the Measure B, Measure V, needs to be detailed so that we're accountable to our public on their money that we've collected and how we're spending it, okay? So that's kind of a separate budgetary thing. But if, if we're committing 30 million, oh, I don't.
So when you think.
Let me, let me make a comment. So what I think I hear staff asking is to say, go to the next slide, please, Kim. So what I think I hear staff asking is to say is according to GASPY in our Standards of Accounting Principles, GASPY is asking us to set a threshold, right? By our own policy, by our own ordinance. When we set our own ordinance on a retention, that if we can't in an accounting process, say, state that we have that retention, then we have to come up with a plan by our own policy to try and attain this retention.
Either there or you change your policy.
Or we change our policy, right?
That's completely up to us.
But we don't want to change our policy too much because I know there's best practices for cities like in the two to three-month range of fund retention in order to keep us in a good accounting rating. So in the past, this council has talked about setting this retention fund between the number four and six range. But it's not feasible today because of the fund balance, right? So in order to accomplish our goal in accounting standards, they're saying, hey, let's do it at 30 million, which leaves a 7.2 million in the fund balance remaining. But this staff has an obligation, right? From July forward, to provide us an accounting to make sure that this, this number is not compromised. And anything that we would bring back would have to be under this figure in order for us to retain our accounting standard, our, our goal of this retention figure. I do think, Mayor, we should shoot for, you know, come up with a plan per the city manager to, I would say, you know, the, the good compromise is we've tackled between four and six, maybe is number five. Particularly based off of our, our general fund operating expenditures. I mean, that's, you know, like it says, 41% of a fund. And I think that is a healthy figure we could provide to an, an accounting firm. That being said, I do agree with the mayor and probably other, you know, members of the public in that we, we need to come up with some sort of like a benchmark or, or a calculator that shows us, right? You know, the Measure V funding and whether we're accounting it, you know, because we talked about, you know, public safety, critical infrastructure, deferred maintenance, you know, and.
Deficit.
Yeah, deficits that we were going to come up with and how we're allocating that money, right? Moving forward so we can provide a benchmark or a calculator or something to, to, to all of us, including the council, to be accountable to the public with, with Measure V funds. So I think that's how I, how I understand what's being stated here tonight.
Yes, and, and suppose at June 30, '26, we only have a fund balance of 30 million. And here we show 37 million. But we actually, when the actual number comes out, let's say we only have 30 million and we set a, a 25% policy, well, we don't have 30 million to put in there because we barely have enough, which means at that point, we'll make a decision to say, okay, well, we're going to put 20 million in there, but we will strive towards toward that 30 million year after year.
But we're actually hoping to make that mark based off projections, right? So that when we report to our accounting firms, we're on target with our, with our ordinance and our goals. Is that correct?
Right, so the 37 million includes the, the 4.5 million surplus, budget surplus. But as you know, since July, we have spent down a lot of that already.
Okay, that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, so you could see that the 37 million that was projected and budgeted.
Isn't there.
Is now less, 4 million dollar less.
Well, I would say after, after Tuesday nights, if we can settle those two negotiated contracts, that this get updated and we revisit to, to see if we're more realistic.
Yeah, and let me add CPOA and CM.
Right.
That one is, those two as well.
I think we've got some expenses that are not reflected in this and that troubles me.
I think the items that we have in there, Mayor, that are, like you said, is the, the employee compen- I'm sorry, classifications, compensation classes. But hopefully, I mean, it, it appears favorable that we can reach that number three goal with the goal, like I said, of, you know, this council deciding between four and six. And I do agree with the mayor that we need an accounting of those issues so we can have a more comfortable number with this moving forward. But this is a good start and hopefully after Tuesday, we'll know.
And, and too, just a reminder, the 30 million is essentially like the city savings account.
Right.
Right?
I understand.
If we're looking at our home, home spending, we're setting aside 30 million in our savings account with the goal to get to either the, the five or the 50.
But I do understand why our staff is asking for that figure because it's a part of them being able to report out to our auditors.
Yeah, because right now, the current policy, official policy says 50%. And realistically, we're only keeping about.
You can't make it.
20%, about 17%.
And we're handcuffing ourselves in, in our, in our audits in a, in a way that's adverse to us.
Well, but again, you know, if we set it at the 30 million and after we look at what's already been really committed and after the negotiations and stuff and trying to look at again at reali- reality, we may only actually be able to commit 25 million and have a comfortable unassigned reserve.
Right.
So I would rather be realistic about it than set something that we can't achieve.
Yeah, so some cities set a minimum and a maximum that they want to reach. So that, when you set a range, then you avoid being out of compliance with your own policy?
See, I think a range of 25 to 50 would be acceptable right now until we get more settled and figure out what's going on.
Right.
But to set it at 30 and know already that we don't have that extra 7 million and we don't even know what the final numbers are yet, to me is, we're not going to make it.
I like the idea of the range too.
Okay, so does it, it sounds to me like you might be more comfortable going with, and I'm going to talk about months, two to six. Well, three is the 30 million.
Yeah, no. It, well, it's 25 to 50 million, so whatever that percentage comes out.
Well, yeah, when we talked about this months ago, when our figures were different, clearly.
I know.
We talked about going between four and six. So when I saw that this was on the study session and I, I honestly just, yeah, I kind of just split the difference, thought, well, hey, the council will probably be happy with five. But I'd say we're kind of at a stalemate right now till we know those figures, be more comfortable and then see, like I said, the more of a true accounting of where our Measure V money is.
So for me, the range, comfort range would be 25 million to 50 million.
And also look at the, the column that says general fund operating expenditures.
Yes.
The bigger the expenditure, you know, each year when the expenditures grow.
The bigger the reserve.
The bigger the reserve.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yep. I think, again, just starting out, I think a range of 25 to 50 would be comfortable to where we wouldn't have to panic and then ask staff to keep us updated on where we are.
Yes. So at the next or a future meeting, we also plan to discuss the reserve for the Internal Services Fund and the Enterprise Funds. So these funds don't, are not required to have a reserve, but cities, by, you know, best practice, keep a reserve so that when we go out and issue bonds, borrow money, the investor will see that we have a policy in place and they feel more confident in lending money to us because we are responsible and making sure that we always have enough available fund to pay the debt.
Yeah, in the past, these Internal Services Funds, some of the, the balances in there were totally out of control. So yeah, we need to have a policy.
Yeah, so when we discuss it, we'll, we'll bring back an update for the general fund.
Okay.
Okay. So this concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions? Chris, you have any questions or comments? Kurt?
No.
Karen?
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Sherri.
All right, well, thank you very much. This has been very informative. And we will adjourn now to our next regular meeting to be held on Tuesday, September 16th, 6 o'clock, the closed session, no earlier than 4:00. We are adjourned.